We want to order and Mr. Vice Chair, can I ask if you could read the announcements, please?
Yes, the meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk via Zoom. In the event that the connection is lost at any time during the meeting, the device is being used by the recording clerk for the purpose of taking minutes. Is there anyone else? Normal?
I would like-
Present who wishes to record the meeting?
I would like to.
Thank you, Dick. While we are conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment, please mute your microphone to avoid interruption outside the conversation. Thank you. See, if I had just been able to get to that announcement, then they never would have done that.
Thank you, Marshall. So we have two sets of minutes today. Marshall?
That is correct. So I will move to approve the minutes of Select Board Work Session held on January 21, 2021.
Second?
And I only have one modification, Marshall, and that is right at the beginning where it talks about the governor's order, my reading it. In there, it says he read instead of-
Ah, yes. That's because my correction was, it was earlier my name, and so I changed it to your name, but I clearly missed the pronouns further down.
No problem. Any other comments or questions on the minutes?
Debbie, you got my comments? Thank you.
Deb, you're on mute, just so-
That's all right. She said-
We're sorry.
It looked very affirmative. We could, we could read your lips.
Okay. Do we need to amend the motion? So, do I have an amended motion?
I guess I'd move to approve the minutes of the Select Board Work Session held on January 2020, January 21, 2021 with your minor correction.
As amended? Yeah.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, and let's do roll call on the amended motion. Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez? Aye. That's unanimous, so the amended motion is accepted, and now we'll just vote on the final amended motion. Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez? Aye. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. You have a second?
All right, so I would move to approve the minutes of the Select Board Meeting held January 25, 2021.
Second?
Any discussion? All right, move to roll call. Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudez? Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So our next item is the Ask Me Public Works M O A. Can I turn to you, Kevin?
Certainly. So we should be ready to move this. I know in executive, we had a good conversation Thursday. We have, we made a couple of small modifications we talked about, was provided to the, to the union, they returned it the next day, and now it's up for you folks for, for a vote, if you so de, if you so please, to move it forward for full execution.
We have a motion?
It looks good. Okay.
Did you have comments beforehand?
I'll do the motion, we can talk. I motion to approve memorandum of agreement between the Town of Topsfield and the Ask Me Council, 93, Local 29, 05, Public Works Employees, dated February 3, 2021, to supersede and replace the August 24, 2020 agreement, and for the chair to sign.
A second?
Second.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
It looks, it looks good to me. I saw the corrections there.
I bet you're glad to get that done, Kevin.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, hearing no other comments, I will move to roll call. Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez? Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin, for all your work and pulling it together.
Thank you all. Thanks for your patience.
Okay, the next item is the Masconomic Regional Agreement Modification, or Proposed Amendment. So Kevin, if you want to give the group an overview of what the school committee is trying to do and where we are with it?
Certainly. So this is something that's been, my understanding, been conversations ad hoc for, for a little time. More recently, they've been ramping up efforts to try to put some real structure behind a new way for Masconomic to appropriate funds based on enrollment, but instead of a year over year, they're looking at a rolling average. The latest proposal that's been provided to us is a, will begin in fiscal '23, and it will look at fiscal '21 and '22 enrollment numbers, adding the two, dividing by two, getting what that average enrollment numbers look like, and that will be what will determine the proration for Topsfield and the other communities for fiscal '23. In fiscal '24, they would look at doing fiscal '21, '22, and '23 enrollment numbers in the same fashion, taking an average of those three years for each community, and then determining what the proration is accordingly. Doing the same for fiscal '25 and '26. In fiscal '26, it would be looking at his five-year historicals to get that rolling average, and then going forward, every year, that five-year rolling average would go one year along with that following year. So in essence, they're looking at a way to sort of level off the big spikes and valleys that can occur with year-over-year enrollment numbers, but there's obviously some considerations that we need to make with, with respect to what those financial impacts will look like. I know that Karen DeVal and Che Elwell from the FinCom have been working with liaisons from Masconomic on this to date. More recently, Melissa Ramasco reached out to us, us being Chair Bermudez and myself, asking for some conversation around the topic with our board, with you folks, and to start the conversation around it. And so there's certain information today that we don't have, that we're looking for from the school to help us have some financial impacts to what those, these change might look like, and that will help inform us in what direction we might want to go, if what they're proposing makes the most sense, or if there might be modification that we want to counter and for them to look at, for us to be supportive of that type of change. I've suggested, and I don't know what the numbers are going to shake out with, it might not be in our best interest, but there might be the opportunity, for instance, to go back five years from fiscal '23, if the numbers support or more advantageous for the town, to look five years rather than the prior two, and start that five-year in that way. Another item that was recommended prior to the latest concept that Masco provided us with was to not start the rolling average until fiscal '26, I believe is what they were targeting, targeting. That way, the, it's not, there's still enough unknown of what those final numbers will look like that we're not 100% certain, it'll go up and down, but we can look at the elementary schools and get a decent idea of what that looks like, so we can still make some good decisions if that was the direction we wanted to go in. So there's a few different ways-
What are we trying to accomplish, what are we trying to accomplish today in regards to this? Just get an update?
To provide, yeah, so my, my hope was, and Chair Bermudez, please correct me if you have any other thoughts of this, but the thought is, want to share with you folks, get initial conversation going on it, so that as we get more information from the schools, you folks will have a little bit of an understanding of where things are now, and help you make good decisions and informed decisions as we get that info.
Okay, I think a good follow-up is to mention that the FinCom, at the meeting, you were there, of course, indicated that they need more information about how this whole thing has worked out currently, and how the change would affect who, when, et cetera. With that, though, I would, having read through the changes, not, not the details of, that we just discussed about apportionment, but just a couple, just two, two specific things. So who, who's going to provide the feedback to whom, or do you want me to talk directly to somebody, or do we want to talk about it now? I'm willing to go right here under, this is in the Masco Regional Agreement itself, because there's two different documents, but under the Proposed Ten Amendment, Election of Members B, the, under that section, at the very, very end of it, it says accurately as possible. I would ask that we change that wording to is reasonably practicable. And I, it's, because these things become legalese over time. I think that's very important, because you cannot be accurate in your apportionment of representatives. You'll never be a one-for, one-for-one unless you have every member of, every voting member of every town as part of the committee, and so you could work out to the point that you get pretty close if you get up to 100 members. We don't want anything like that. So I think wording, the wording, it's, it's meeting what the intent is, but I think it's better than the word accurate, is reasonably, and not possible. It's possible to put 100 people in the committee to get it closer, but practicable, I think, is a better word. So that's one change that I would have. And the, the second one is that there was a change in, it was changed, the, the interim committee B, it was under that, the, the title, I think, I think it was, it was an attempt to change the title of that section from elected members to election of committee members. I think, I guess election of, I, I think that really what we want is membership, that's what we're talking about, and I, I do think that the beginning of those paragraphs is probably unnecessary. It essentially, not the paragraph itself, but the, the detail within it as to how you, how the various towns do with two people, et cetera, et cetera. It simply should be, the members of the committee from each town shall be elected by the voters for three-year terms. I think that's, that's the main thing. But the title, then, would be either elected, back to what it was, which was elected members, or I believe perhaps better, membership of committee, because that's really what we're talking about, is the membership of the committee. How, it's made up of the three towns, their three-year terms, and it's X number from this town, X number from that town, et cetera. So those are the, the changes, I guess really three changes, because I'm asking for a change in the first paragraph there, will we eliminate, other than the first sentence?
If I could, thanks for those comments and input, Dick. If I could bring it back up to the higher level, just for a minute, and add a couple of comments. So the policy subcommittee of the school committee put together this proposal, and they're asking the, the three-town boards to give them input in whether we agree conceptually with moving forward with this, which is the attempt to try to smooth the enrollment numbers, so to speak, smooth the impact of enrollment going up and down, so that people can better anticipate and manage their budgets. So are we in agreement to try to do that? And if so, how do we feel about their specific proposal to have it begin in '23 with a two-year average, and then go to a three-year, four-year, five-year average? Because with any approach that we take, someone is going to be hit harder in the beginning, someone's going to benefit in the beginning, and in this case Middleton really isn't impacted in any way, because their numbers have remained consistent. Because if one of the towns come back and says, we're not even for this, we don't think we need to smooth, then that's going to alter the discussion. They have to go back and try to talk with the towns and put forward something that everybody agrees to. If we don't like their specific proposal, because the numbers are very detrimental to us, and in this case, they might be. For the last couple of years, Topsfield has had increasing enrollment as a percentage of everybody at the high school. It could be that more people from Middleton and Boxford are leaving to go to private schools, and so our people remain, and therefore our enrollment is higher, and it could be we just have more kids coming up through the years, but it looks like our numbers may be dropping off in the next couple of years. So if we go with this proposal, which is average fiscal year '21 and '22, we're kind of locking in a higher number that we're going to live with then for several years when our numbers drop off. So we have to look at the specific numbers and say, wow, that's going to be a really hard hit to us in '23. We might not want to do it beginning in '23. We may want to push it out a little bit when our financials look better. So Che and Karen have gone back to Masco to ask for the specific numbers, so that we have something to do an analysis on. They've got to run the numbers and present it to everyone. Right now, it's really conceptual in nature, because until we see the numbers, we don't know how it's going to impact us. The other piece of this is that Che brought up, and they're also asking Masco for this information, that, that number, the dollar value that Topsfield has to pay each year is a combination of two pieces. One is the piece that the state says we have to pay. They have a formula that says based upon a number of factors. It could be population, income level, value of the homes, whatever. They have some formula that says this is how much you have to spend per person, Topsfield, towards Masco, and they do that for Boxford, and they do it for Middleton. So they add up all those amounts, and that's the base level, and then you look at, well, what actually is our budget? And the difference between those two is what we're talking about here with this formula. You take that remaining budget, and somehow you apportion it over the three towns. What Che had identified was, we really don't know what that first bucket looks like from the state, specifically for Topsfield. We just get a general number that says you need to, to pay 28% or 29% of the Masco budget. Well, how much of that was mandated per the state, and how much is that extra differential? Because it could be, we're not even solving any problem here. It could be that if 85 or 90% of the dollar value that we have to pay each year and put into our budget is mandated by the state, it's really not going to do too much for us to change our allocation formula for the remaining 15%. And we may still choose to do it, but at least we would know, you're not really mitigating the bigs up, you know, highs and lows. You're doing a small impact. And so they're trying to get that information from Masco as well, as well as how does the state calculate it? Because if for some reason Topsfield's really being hit hard, let's say we have to pay more money if we have fewer families and students in town, if they think for some reason people without kids are not having to pay as much money for raising kids, they may hit us a little higher for being a town with a larger senior population, or if our home prices are going up for some reason, and we disagree with the formula, that's where Kevin could reach out to Brad or Joan and say, we need some help here. The formula that you're using for that state allocation is really hitting Topsfield quite hard, and we'd like to talk about it. So there are really two paths there, but the first one for our purposes, and to get back to Melissa Ogden and the policy committee, is we need those numbers from Che and Karen in order to see what the impact of Topsfield is. So today, we could only conceptually tell you what they've been discussing, because we don't have the, the firm numbers.
It's conceptually worth it to go forward and evaluate what could be changed.
Seems, seems, seems to me it's an effort, seems to me it's an effort to try to ease the, the huge ups and downs because of student enrollment. Whether or not we're there yet, I have a feeling that we need to do more work.
Yeah, and, and right now, what we could see from the numbers are that our enrollment numbers in the younger grades moving up or falling. So it could be that our percentage of the kids at Masco is going to fall. We don't know, though, because it could be that no one from Topsfield goes to private school, and let's just say half the kids from Boxford and Middleton take off from private school. Then our enrollment, in essence, has gone up at Masco, even though our number of kids has dropped, so it's hard to know for sure what's going to happen when they get to Masco, but we do have a trend of the, the numbers themselves, the raw numbers going down, in which case, if we lock in with fiscal year '21 and '22, we're going to take a little bit of a hit, because if we didn't do that and just went on the normal path, our numbers would be going down like this. So sometimes it's going to be hit harder.
But of course, it's not our numbers, it's our numbers in relation to the other towns.
Exactly, exactly, and we don't know what the other towns are going to do. We know they're raw numbers.
Ours could be going down, and we could still be going up in our assessment.
We could be. Their numbers are going down as well, just not as fast as ours, and more kids could leave for private school.
Yeah, and, and by the way, when we throw that in, not, not that it's a big deal, but we should recognize also that students that from Topsfield or any of the towns that go to Essex Agricultural take away from the number that go to Masconomic and are part of this formula. We pay for it otherwise, but-
Right, right. So, yeah, it was more just to introduce kind of the concept of what the policy committee is trying to do. It will go to the three boards in the three towns, and it'll go to the FinComs, and then if we decide that this is something we want to do, it would have to go to town meeting. It would be an article on the warrant to modify the school agreement.
And interestingly enough, this is being done as several amendments, so that one can pass, then the others can fail. In other words, we don't have to make one, it's not a proposal to make one amendment, it's a proposal to make the following three amendments. So I think that is wise, because some things may be less controversial than others, but you still want to clean things up. One of the things that I am a little surprised has not appeared here is something about dealing with essentially the, the debt. There's a good reason for it, perhaps, because there's no easy way to do it, as far as I'm concerned. I think what we have is about as good as it's going to get, but based on some of the discussions that went on about the debt and spending money, how to do capital, et cetera, I almost expected there might be something here, but I'm glad there's not.
The other thing that was brought up, and it isn't specifically any of the documents that you've seen, but the issue of Topsfield potentially having the largest enrollment at Masco, percentage-wise, and yet we only have three seats on the school committee, where Boxford and Middleton have four. And that is determined by the population of the town, not by the enrollment at the school. So the question is, is that fair? You know, Middleton will always be the largest town, so they'll always have four on the school committee, even though we're bearing the lion's share, because the majority of the, you know, percentage is being paid for by Topsfield. So that got thrown out there, not that it's going to be addressed with this, though.
Can I offer this thought, though? Because I had spent some time on this in the past when there were amendments. It occurred to me at one point that that agreement that was put together was not some slapdash idea that several people in the three towns came up with. There were a number of regional systems being built at that time, and I'm sure that there was guidance from other systems in the state, because the state was driving to go regional, regionalizations, that had done some good thinking about how you put together a regional system with multiple towns and have it reasonably fair. So making changes, of course, updating, improving after 50 years, right on, but that, the agreement is actually very well thought through.
It may have been, which seems to make a lot of sense, that back then, if you were the largest town, you were probably going to have the largest percentage of kids at the high school, so it made sense for you to have more representation. Since it's switched now, they'll always be the largest town, but they're not the largest as far as the population of the kids who are at Masco, so it may need, need to be relooked at. I mean, I can understand why they started that way.
And on the population question, I mean, yes, Middleton is far and away larger in population, but Boxford isn't, is bigger than us, but not by anywhere close to the percentage that Middleton is bigger than either of them, so why is Boxford with four and Topsfield with only three, I guess?
It was recently done, what, about four years ago or something? The re-allocation of the representatives, and it was done based on the, the populations, as you said, but it was worked out so that it was fair. I think we went from, at the time, we went from 13 to 11. Actually, we reduced the total number of, of members, but it was a fair allocation.
I think some people are just kind of questioning it now, and saying, if we're bearing the largest share, we don't have the same voice at the table. But anyway, so any other questions or feedback that you'd like Kevin and I to pass on to Melissa Ogden? They're meeting on February 11th. There's, there's subcommittee, the policy subcommittee, and they would welcome any comments or feedback, and we said that we would discuss it today and then share that feedback with them.
So you have mine? Yeah, okay.
Okay, and if you, Boyd or Marshall, have any thoughts, you know, feel free to pass them on to Kevin, so that we can share them with Melissa if something, you know, pops in your mind after, after the meeting and before the 11th.
Will do.
Thanks, and we'll get back as soon as Che and Karen have more specific information. Okay, moving on to the next one, the Vaccination Revolving Fund. Kevin, I'll go back to you again.
Thank you. So we talked a little bit about this, we're looking for a, a place where we can, I guess, house funds that come in related to vac, COVID vaccinations, and then we can use those funds directly to offset our costs. So we, Catherine Gabriel had a conversation with DSL Law and others around this. We were told that we could create a temporary revolving account from now until town meeting to help us with sort of an emergency basis that we're in. Talked with KP Law to, to ensure that there wasn't anything else that we needed to consider, and Lauren Goldberg had some hesitation, and so she reached out to DSL Law as well, and their response was a little bit different than what they'd given Catherine, and I, my understanding is that Catherine received an email from the person she had reached out to apologizing that they had made a mistake in the guidance they had previously given. So in essence, to create a temporary revolving, a fund through the board is not something that we can do at this time. They did concede that they thought it was a good idea for situations like this, but that there is not a mechanism that to allow it. So then that begs the question, how are we going to manage the, the revenues and the cost? And so I've had a preliminary conversation-
Just to come back, though, the Board of Selectment does have authority to make adjustments to an existing revolving fund, I believe, and so that's probably where some of that stuff came in, Catherine may know the answers, but it's not as if it's totally, there's a reason for having it thought that way, but this is a whole new fund, so that's a different story. Thank you. Go ahead.
Exactly, and so I spoke with, with the Chair of the FinCom a couple days ago, and talked through a couple of options of how we might be able to, to do this. One is leverage, and I think this is our first option, is to leverage existing grant funds that we've received to cover those costs when those funds are received, so that we can use that account to cover those costs specifically related to the vaccinations and COVID. The other option, if, if, is if we decide we have other items we want to earmark for those dollars we've received in the grants, and I've talked with the Chair. FinCom, like I mentioned, is to do a reserve fund transfer into the Board of Health budget to cover those costs upfront, as we know that they exist. So there's a couple of mechanisms to allow us to do it, and we'll work in the next coming days to really nail down exactly what is the best option, but right now, I think we're leaning towards the drawdown on the grants first, and then if necessary, look for the reserve fund transfer.
And again, we had that $40,000 in grants, we thought about maybe half of it going to the special nurse, but the remainder being available for the vaccines, order of magnates of $20,000.
Yeah, and I've, I've, one update on that I should mention, too, is I reached out to the Senator's office just to verify process. The last conversation I had with the representative and Senator was the money would become available in short order. They're verifying where that is at this point and when that'll become available to us. So we'll, we're very thankful from the Senator and from the representative for putting that earmark in, and the budget allowing us to have those funds, and I'll keep you all posted on, on that.
Great. Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
And while we're talking about vaccines, though, within the last 24 hours, there's been a flurry of a couple of requests from residents, a couple of residents, to, as we saw, Marshall Hook put out a thing also, to do them locally. So I've responded also, explaining where we are, what we've done, and I, I think we all have to recognize where the state is on this, and we can try to fight the state, but I, I have a feeling it's a downward spiral. But we need to do, as we have done, and I, I do want to emphasize that, because I did an email- we have done, and I do want to emphasize that, because I did an email, I responded with, to explain that we have been concerned about those that are shut-ins, and we have taken care. As I understand from last week, we have done all of the shut-ins last week, so they're taken care of.
Yes, and I can give you.
That was a commitment that Jen made last week.
And done, right, okay.
Yeah.
So just by way of an update, everything's moving very quickly, and Monday we'll be giving an update at the top of the Select Board meeting in a regular session, but tomorrow we have another 100 shots that we will be providing. We'll be setting up at Little Brook Village to provide 19 shots at their location, and then we'll be providing 10 other shots that are for people in Phase 1 who have come to us since saying, I now would like a shot, that we'll be providing, and then the remaining are going to be for the 75 and older. I sent out that call on Saturday morning, asking people who are interested in learning more about local vaccination clinics to contact us. We've had about 86 people reach out to us, even prior to that call going out, but since that call. And we had a number of volunteers we lined up over the weekend, working with the Council on Aging Board, identifying members of the board and others to help us make phone calls today, once we knew for certain that we were going to receive the vaccinations, which unfortunately sometimes the state commits and then doesn't provide, but we have them in hand now. Soon as we got them in hand, we started volunteers, we set up in four different work sessions, Donna Rich helped, we set up four different work sessions throughout the building, and people were dialing and walking people through how to set up on the mega site, but also setting them up for tomorrow's vaccination clinic. So thank you to the volunteers. I know they're not necessarily on the call now, but I'll say publicly, if anyone is paying attention, that we do appreciate the whole community's support in making it happen.
And I'm, just to wrap up this one with a bow, I am getting a lot of positive feedback on our plan to do the information session at the top of the Monday meeting, so I think that'll serve everyone pretty well.
And just to comment, I'm one of the volunteers who are calling today to the Little Brook people to set up the appointments. They are so appreciative and so happy that we're coming by, and it was really, you could hear the joy in their voices. It was so nice to actually talk with a number of them, so.
Great. I gave you some feedback in that we're pretty lucky to have the journey, adjoining town here with Ferncroft as one of the mega sites. They're open, I went there today, saw how it was working, they're doing an excellent job there also. So we're lucky enough to be real close.
We actually received, I think, eight extra shots today. We worked out a side agreement with the mega site. Any extras that they have on a daily basis, they're going to call us, and we're going to have that ongoing list where if people can move it in quick order, we'll have those available to them, either to come down, either to go to the vaccination site, the mega site. If they can't, we'll find a way to get those shots and bring it to them if we need to. So we're grabbing them from everywhere we can.
All right, moving on to the next item, the fiscal year 22 budget, for a discussion of any outstanding items where we still felt we needed some discussion before that final budget moved on to FinCom. Kevin, I don't know, did you get input from everybody or anybody who had concerns?
I did have, I've received yours, Chair Bermuda's. I also received some comments from Mr. Jackson, and I know that Mr. Gant shared them at the last meeting specifically on the electricity. I know he had an opportunity to speak with Donna Rich, I think, earlier today, and I know that at the last meeting, Mr. Hook provided some comments as well. So I have my notes from what I have in front of me from last meeting, as well as the documents that were sent to me to walk through with you folks. I don't know, if you'd like, Madam Chair, I can kind of go through each of the items as it's presented, and I think there's some overlap with what some of the other.
That would be great. Since you have all the lists, you'll know what needs to be discussed.
I didn't have a time to consolidate them, so there will be some overlap, but I'll start with yours, Madam Chair. Maybe I'll go through your list, and then I'll move to Mr. Jackson's, and we can then fill in any of the leftover ones at that point as well.
Yeah, and I think the item, we discussed, you know, my open question on the vaccine, so that's probably fine, and so we don't need to go through that one.
Okay, excellent. So.
That was a warrant article on the vaccines, is that what you're saying?
No, these are budget items.
Budget items, okay.
These are the fiscal 22 before Kevin sends over the omnibus.
Yes, yes. So I didn't understand what the issue was on the vaccines.
Well, any, there are items that are over and above ask, and so I asked Kevin a question about that, and he gave me an answer. So it was a question on an over and above ask item.
Thank you.
So I'll just start with the first one, electricity, which I know Mr. Gant, you'd pointed out, and Mr. Jackson, I know you would as well. I'm going to turn this over to Donna. I know that team's been able to do a little further digging on the numbers, and we have, we've refined the number accordingly. So Ms. Rich, I'll hand it off to you.
Good, thank you. So we went back and we looked at it, and I don't really have a great reason, but we are going to decrease the amount that we are requesting to 10,000, which represents 5,000 that we anticipate for the EV chargers that will add additional cost to our electricity, but we will get, we will be paid back that, but it goes into the general fund. And then 5,000 for the rate increase. So I would like to amend the electricity increase from 20,000 to 10,000, and then in looking at the gas, which I had reduced by 2,000, I would like to amend that and level fund it in the abundance of caution that I should, that we should just level fund it and not reduce it to 1,000. So those are my two amendments to the Town Hall budget that I would like to present to the board. That's what I got.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Kevin has the budget to sign and revisions to pass forward to the Town and County's office.
Okay, is everybody comfortable with the gas and electrical ask with those revisions?
Yeah. Well, yeah, we don't have, you know, a lot of data to support what she's asking, but it's her skin in the game.
Thanks. And I think you had actuals to date, and then you were trying to anticipate what remained for the end of the year.
Yeah.
Level fund that for next year if possible.
I'm joking, of course, but Donna and I have had some conversation about the situation, and part of our issue is the heating system in the building. I'm sorry we wound up with a heating system like that, but it is what it is, and it's all a heat pump-based system, and it strikes me as being somewhat inefficient.
Just to be honest about it, though, it really is a mix of heat pump and gas-fired.
No question. It is a mix, yeah.
Okay, if there are no other questions on that one, Kevin, if you want to go to the next one on your list?
All right, excellent, thank you. The next one is the facility management. There was an ask for $2,000 addition to continue with Paul's services, overseeing facilities, not just at Town Hall, but he's also spending time helping with other buildings as well. And Madam Chair, I don't know if you wanted to comment specifically about that one yourself?
Sure. So I know a lot of the effort on Paul's part was the data collection to build this model so that we would know when we needed repairs, to get ahead of it, and to save money overall on capital expenditures. My thought was, with the winding down of that data collection now, does that free up enough time that he can support those other buildings without the additional ask of 2,000?
So I will, maybe, I know Donna works very closely with Paul and the needs, and I know we talked a little bit about some of the expansion of what were expectations from Paul, too, helping more of this, as we've gone into last year, we really asked Paul to help us with creating the scope of work for different projects, HVAC replacements, facility-related projects that have come up, helping us obtain good quality bids, to make sure they're reputable companies, et cetera, et cetera. And I know that from my perspective, I know Donna's mentioned a few times, that towards the end of the year, when it gets really tight, it becomes, it becomes a challenge to some degree to ensure that we have the right continuation of the oversight that Paul provides. But I know, too, we are still looking to roll out the facility de-dude as well, and I know there'll be some additional hands-on efforts from Paul to support that effort. But Donna, maybe you can get into some of the detail.
I mean, I'd like more, but I'm willing to try, see if 2,000 works for this year, see if we need to increase it the following year. Yes, he is moving out into police, and he's been doing the library, sending them things. So, I mean, I don't want to ask for the world. I'd like to see if 2,000 is enough. If not, then I'll be back next year asking for more. How about that?
And I did, to worth note, she did ask for $5,000 initially, and I twisted her arm.
Me down.
Yep.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's a negotiating tactic, Donna. I'll see your 2,000, and I wanted more, so I'm still at 2,000.
That's here for another two. That's, I mean, he is doing what he needs to do, and I'm more than willing, I mean, if I can get 2,000, I'll live with two.
So is that whole data collection effort of getting all the information into facility dude and giving access to people to utilize that, is that all done now, and we're just now in oversight mode?
So it's in there, and now he is, yeah, I mean, we're moving into the phase where he's consolidating vendors that we're going to use for all the buildings. He's sending out reports to the library and the police station on what their preventive maintenance should be for the following month and what they can expect, and it takes a little pressure off of those individuals in those buildings that are in charge of that, so that they don't have to keep it in their forefront. Paul's now leading the charge for those buildings. So he's going into the next phase of what facility dude has available and using the data collection in that way. So he's going the next step.
Okay.
Question, Donna, does it appear to you that the various departments don't mind having him involved doing this stuff? Because, you know, some people could get their nose out of joint by having somebody from outside come in.
Seriously, Boyd? They love it.
They have, they've opened, for anything, when you introduce something new, there's a period where you need to feel it out, learn what it's going to be like. There's gives and takes. I can say, though, that I think most department heads, if not all, do trust the work he's doing, and they do see that it being a healthy support to the needs that their buildings might have.
Good. Enough said as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
The flip side of that is, essentially, we're spending money. What is the advantage? What's the payback? And some of the payback, in some ways, would be to say that, well, there are people who are taking care of those buildings, and one I can think of specifically, a library director, that now does not have that load to worry about. It's being taken care of by somebody else and we're paying for, and therefore, how are we able to get more efficiency in the library using that? Can we decrease the number of hours of somebody else or something of that nature? So that's kind of like the flip side of it. But it really is the kind of questions we should be answering. We're spending the money, what's the advantage? Does it pay for itself?
You would suspect that the long-range benefit is going to be a better-maintained facility and increased efficiencies in heating systems and cooling systems as time goes on. All very difficult numbers to.
Or wasn't that previous till now, it's not that there was someone else doing the job, but rather there was nobody doing the job, and things were falling into disrepair because there was nobody to do the job, and you're now taking care of things that simply weren't being taken care of before.
We were being, we were very much reactive when it came to facilities, not of anyone's fault, just that it's not technically in job descriptions, that, you know, you are going to be the person that crafts the scope of work and bids out the project. We do have a procurement officer who does a great job, but there's an expertise to it. It's like, to a certain extent, I liken it to IT, and we do have somebody who we have, who we can rely on. We do the best we can in-house. Sometimes we volunteer for support, but at the end of the day, you know, to have that expertise, it saves time and it ends up saving money at the end of the day. It's hard to quantify exactly what that dollar amount is, but it's certainly, I have a property management background myself before I came into the public sector, and we relied heavily on that expertise. Absolutely. Sorry.
The reason, that's okay. The reason I bring it up is, I think, it's easy to fall into the habit, and this isn't specifically you, Donna, but this, you know, is one area where we use this rationale, which is, we want to invest money because we will ultimately save money. So we make the investment, but are we going back to say, did it actually save? Not so much to point fingers, but to help us in our decision-making going forward, so that we don't use that rationale and just end up increasing the cost structure.
Well said.
Okay, if no one else has any question on facility management, we can move to the next one, Kevin?
Sure. Inspections. There was, we talked a little bit about this when our Inspectoral Services Director was with us. He's provided us with a notification that he's going to fully retire, it sounds like, probably by the end of this fiscal year, and so we're looking at trying to account for that. As, we did have the, I won't call it an experiment, but the adjustments that were made prior to, when I was here, it was mid-2019, when he formally retired and then took on the 19-hour, part-time director position. According to Glenn, it's 24, 26 hours that he's putting into it at this time, and, you know, talking through it with him, he's really advocated for a full-time position. He put in the full-time position, his budget, that's, when I say full-time, that's 30 hours a week, so full-time, part-time benefited, technically, at the 30-hour mark. I did send to you folks a little bit of a breakdown of 24-hour option and 30-hour option. The number that Glenn's put in here amounts to about a $66,000 salary. My estimates that I provided you folks with, I did a grade eight, step nine, which might be a little bit light, but that number would be about a $64,000 number if we wanted to do the 30 hours with two steps less. And it's conceivable that we go to market and we have somebody we bring in with even less experience, which would be a lower step. But ultimately, what's represented in the budget now is the 30 hours, and it is an increase of about, I think, $7,000 from what the old salary wage, salary and wage was combined between the administrative assistant and inspector when it was 30 hours and 24. If you do 30 and 30, we're looking, actually, it's about more like $11,000 swing from fiscal '19, what that amount was.
I guess this would be one of those situations, Kevin, where I was mentioning, we made a change, we increased the hours for the admin, and told that with the new software that was out in the field, we would get efficiencies, and we could definitely do this, you know, for 18 hours, whatever it was. And so now the net of it is that we're actually going up $11,000. We're not even holding steady at what we were before. We're increasing by $11,000. I know it's been a busy time for Glenn, because a number of things were going on. He was doing the sign compliance, which that was, you know, kind of from the ground up effort, but that's now more in maintenance mode. We sent out the letters, people are complying, so that kind of came and went. I know that a number of the home improvement construction projects were started up, but again, we're going to be winding down probably from that a little bit. Those projects are well underway. And so I'm back to the question of saying, well, before we were operating with less, has that much changed? um, has that much changed now that we've got to jump on eleven thousand dollars and swing back? Can we share an inspector again with another town, which is what we had? Glenn did two towns back when he was with us. You know, is that an option to to keep costs down and still give the service that we want? So I'm I'm just raising it again because I feel like it's part of the discussion, but we didn't really tie it up, so.
And it's a it's a tough, it's a, it's a, it's, if nothing had changed, I think, to be honest with you, I could have probably taken a cleaner look at the hours that were allocating between the admin and and Glenn with one transition. We have two transitions happening, not exactly at the same time, but spaced out. Um, and accordingly, um, it makes it a little bit difficult because if we we're making decisions now with the administrative position to try to make sure we can maintain what we're doing right now um and over the next six months plus. Um, and so, for instance, we did reduce those hours. There was initially an ask in the first round of the budget, when I had the first conversation with Glenn, for four additional hours for the admin. Um, which I don't think I would have supported it um compared to some of the other additional hours. And then when um Ms. Risa gave her her notice, um, I indicated to Glenn, we talked through it, that I think we needed to reduce that down to thirty hours. Um, that way, if we went back to a thirty-hour, twenty-four-hour, which is what it was before, thirty hours for the inspector, twenty-four for the admin, we could do a twenty-four hours for the inspector and thirty hours for the admin, get the same amount of hours at fifty-four between the two of them um and sort of hit the minimum of what um Glenn was asking for at the twenty, saying he was working about twenty-four. Glenn said, though, he said, for this job and the work that goes into it, you you with somebody coming in, you're you're going to have a hard, you'd be hard pressed to hire somebody at twenty-four to start with. And he he thought that for somebody else, it might be twenty-six, twenty-eight hours that that person might be taking on, um, if not more, up to that thirty, put the thirty in because he believed that was the right number. Um, the one thing that that I would point out too is that with hiring somebody new, the intent would be to start them at a lower rate than what uh Glenn's at Glenn's maxed out at the eleventh step. So we might have uh some savings in there as a result of that. Um, not sure how much that ultimately would look like. Um, but it it this this happened solely in the, it literally was the day before we submitted our version one that Glenn indicated to me that he was, he had put this in the budget and that he was can, he was going to be changing course. Um, so we've been really, with everything else going on, trying to get our arms around what's the right place to go long-term within that department. Um, be completely frank with you all sitting here right now, wouldn't it be fair to you? Wouldn't it be fair to me to say I have a hundred percent confidence that thirty hours is the right or twenty-four hours is the right number? Um, but I do know that that based on conversations and and understanding at least enough, a little bit of what they do on a day-to-day, it's probably somewhere in that range.
And Glenn, I think, painted a pretty dark doomsday scenario at being able to hire somebody at a reduced even less than he's making. He seemed to think that we would need to go up from what he's making now to get somebody competent, willing to take the job. So I don't know that that's a realistic place to look for a reduction.
Well, that's why I was suggesting.
I know, I'm basically on solely what Glenn said. I have no knowledge beyond that.
Uh, that's why I was thinking, what if you got someone who was servicing two towns? Then you could get a strong person who's making enough money, um, because Glenn was servicing two before and he's strong and good. So that might be easier to hire than, as Glenn said, someone at a fewer hours. So Kevin, the twenty-seven thousand, one seventy-four that's in the budget is the over ask. Is that for twenty-four hours or thirty?
It's for thirty hours total and that is a grade, what Glenn put in there was a grade eight, I believe, step eleven. If we wanted to shave some money in at this, in that position, I would be, I would feel comfortable um looking at it as step nine, which would be a sixty-four thousand, three forty-seven total salary, reducing that twenty-seven down by roughly twenty-eight hundred dollars as a result of that. Um, it would, if that way would be sort of a, we would have to hire somebody less than the higher step, but unless we get somebody in here who's, you know, forty years' experience and incredibly efficient, um, I don't think we would hire someone at the highest step from day one. Um.
So you'd have that at twenty-four and change rather than twenty-seven and change?
I I could, we could go down to there and I think from, I think we'd still be able to, that would still allow us to have the flexibility to go to thirty hours if we kept in in and still reduce that line item by about that twenty-eight hundred.
So you're proposing still staying at thirty hours, but just dropping how much we're going to pay the person?
Um, if we wanted to find savings in that line item, that that I I would, at this, it, for this point in time, I would say that's probably the best bet. I have some contacts in the industry that I want to reach out to and really get a good handle on what a town like Topsfield um should expect from both the day-to-day, week-to-week, hourly, and also from a hiring standpoint, because I'm hearing certain things, it's going to be really hard, you know, it's going to be a challenge. And that can help inform some of our decision-making, because if I I get a couple of leads and they say, yeah, we got a couple of people who might be really good and looking for twenty-four hours or twenty-six hours, you might be able to flex this in the next, you know, next phase of the process. I can't promise that, but I'll do the research and make the calls to get a little bit more informed on it.
Just to be clear for myself, we're talking about fifty-one, one-twenty. That's the super, uh, that's the building inspector salary period, right?
Yep.
So so forty, forty thousand, seven plus twenty-seven thousand would be sixty-seven, right?
Um.
Didn't Glenn say something in the order of sixty-six thousand for for somebody, order of magnitude? I think it's following on what you said, Marshall. He he indicated that it was going to cost us something to really get one.
Well, and and while, yes, that's that's what I said, but again, that's that's one man's opinion, who certainly, to be clear, knows a hell of a lot more about it than than I do. Um, but it is only one man's opinion on on whether or not that would be an increased cost, because I think Kevin is saying that he's spoken to some other people and maybe he's heard something different. So.
Well, the um, the the proposal that's in front of you now that was submitted from the building department is, or inspectional department, is sixty-seven thousand, one thirty-six. Um, total. Uh, oh, nope, I apologize, hold on.
Eight hundred, sixty-seven, eight, nine.
Yeah.
Nine hundred, yeah, order of magnitude, just get the the high level.
Sixty-seven, nine. So it's right around that sixty-eight thousand dollar number.
And you're saying you think you could do that for sixty-five, five or something like that? Don't ask me to do exact math. I'm doing very rounded math.
If we had to shave it, if we were looking, said we have to come up with some savings on this, just based on um at the thirty hours, I could, I could say that we could make a, an argument that we could find someone at the grade eight, step nine. It's going to obviously reduce what that thirty hours makes over the course of the um, the year by about that.
Twenty-eight hundred.
Yeah, but about the twenty-eight hundred dollars. So I, if we ha- if if we really wanted to, that's a place we could, we might be able to squeeze it. It it's definitely, you know, it doesn't leave much, um, that's what I would be able to offer somebody if we went with thirty hours. That's what would be in the budget.
Good, good discussion. I think we have a ways to go on this. Um, we we've got to go to town meeting with something that is reasonable, that we can achieve to to do the job that needs to be done, which is obviously doing the various inspections, when they need to be done and being done right. And then also uh zoning enforcement, not of signage so much, but there is just the de- continual need to do the right zoning enforcement. Um, I'm, my take is to leave what we have here now, having all the kinds of good discussions that s- suggestions that you made about hours in that, Lynn. Uh, but to recognize that this budget probably will change before we go to press. Uh, and and it puts a lot of pressure on you, Kevin, to try to get pretty quickly from someplace around the state, whatever, talking with the right people, to find out how we're going to service this starting July first and how much money it's going to take to do it. A lot of factors there.
And and if there are any options, Kevin, for surrounding towns who are in a similar situation where we could work together with them?
Absolutely.
Well, there there's no question that if we can find a a building inspector in a neighboring town that's willing to work uh two towns, that's a real plus. There's no question.
Where did we steal the mechanic from? Don't ask them. When was it?
They're all, they're all beating down the gates. They want to come work for us.
Okay, um, next item, Kevin?
Um, so we, uh, I'll, we talked about vaccine earlier, so I'll 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 move on to the um. Um, we did talk about this. I just wanted to make sure, because I know when you might have reflected and reviewed the list we gave you, version one, there was that um ten thousand dollars which Jen had asked, or Chief Collins Brown had asked for, for the additional amount for the qualified firefighters. Um, I did want to make sure because it's not in this omnibus version one. Um, if there was any questions, concerns um on related to those numbers. And it it, I will preface this by saying, unlike, say, the full-time police officers or full-time firefighters, it is a little bit of a guessing game on what those numbers will come in at. Um, because we don't know if it's going to be someone responding to a call at the low end or the high end, um, or how many calls we're going to get, period. Um, but um, like I, like Chief had mentioned, Catherine and I, because we we both sort of said, I don't know if you want to level fund that, you know, we we, if we get the same amount of calls and we get the same number of people in the same, you know, scale coming, based on bringing some of those people up, you, we should expect some increased potential out of that line item. Um, so there was, she did some numbers and she came up with the ten thousand dollars. I think she worked with Catherine on that. Um, but I did want to make sure I mention that before we get into a couple of the other items.
Any question on that one for any board members?
Nope. Not me.
Okay, next one, Kevin?
So then going into the um the next few are outside line items, outside specific line items, but they're for discussion purposes. We talked a little bit about the the lease versus the purchase of a cruiser. Um, and one of the things at our last uh FinCom meeting, we brought it up when Chief was there Monday um and discussed, was it Tuesday? Tuesday. It was yesterday. Um, they started bleeding to each other. Um, and we talked it a little bit about that with the FinCom. Um, and so we have fourteen thousand, eight forty-four as above guidelines request in the police department budget for the lease of a police cruiser. Um, we also have the um full price of a purchase of a police cruiser in the capital plan right now. Um, I think we, at the end of the day, before we go to town meeting, that police cruiser will be represented either as free cash under the capital, a raise and appropriate under capital, or it'll be a raise under the operating budget um under the fourteen thousand, eight forty-four. Or we won't purchase a release of cruiser this year, but that I don't think is something we've, I think we all know that we've got, we've skipped a year and then it looks like it makes a lot of sense to continue. Um, so with that said, um, FinCom took it up. There was some good conversation, like I said, um, last night uh around that. And um, there was the concern of putting it in as raised and appropriate or more specifically in the operating budget as that um, that growth of that over four years now creates the, it's called seventy thousand dollar burden annually, once we get to a full lease amount um in the operating budget uh that we'll have to account for as we try to balance our budget, whereas free cash, we can pull down from that. So one of the things they talked about was actually increasing potentially, having a discussion on increasing um what the target number is. Um, the guideline's three hundred thousand dollars in capital. Um, discussion was that it's a target, Kev. If you need more money, let us know. Um, which I appreciate, but at the same time, I want to be very cost, cost-conscious um of what we do and try to work within the guidelines we're given. Um, but that's sort of an aside, I guess, to the police cruiser itself. Police cruiser is something we need to get some definition to. We started the conversations with FinCom, so I'm not sure if we wanted to, Madam Chair was on your list, so I don't want to.
Yeah, the only question I had, Kevin, is I I couldn't remember and I wasn't staring at at the the spreadsheet when I wrote this down, but the fourteen, eight forty-four, if we do that for four years, that's a total of fifty-nine thousand, three seventy-six. And for some reason, I was, had in my head that the purchase price was higher than that, which seemed odd to me. It seems like a lease should be more expensive. What was the purchase price?
It was within, I think, a couple thousand. I think.
Two thousand dollars, it was about two thousand dollars more, like fifty-seven and a half to fifty-nine and a half.
So it was less. Okay, for some reason, sixty was in my head.
Effective uh interest rate is uh two point one percent. But uh at this juncture, we we really need to make some decisions because, for example, if we put this in two places, it's in the operating budget and it's in the cap- the capital items, it creates confusion. I, at this juncture, I appreciate the work that Neil Hovey did in looking at the the lease. Um, I think that we need to take that off the table. I think just take the lease off the table. We haven't done it in the past. Maybe in the future we'll do it. But let's do these discussions in in October and try to decide why. At this point, do not put it in both places. Pick one, and my thing is to leave it as a capital item and not as something we try to put into the budget.
Kevin, did you speak with Fin- FinCom at all? Did they give you any feedback?
It was similar, it was similar uh to our conversations today, just kind of saying, we want to be transparent, we want to give you a couple of options. I know this is something that has been discussed a number of years, trying to put some definition and inconsistency going forward and how we want to address it. Um, they didn't have a hard, a hard line in it. We could certainly take it out of the operating budget. And then I've already broached the conversation with them, so if if we want to address it again, we could flex in the version three um if need, if we needed to, but we could represent it in the version two in the capital only for now. It's fine, whatever, whatever. I wanted to have them both there for make sure we had the conversation. That was the most important.
Correct. But now we need to go one or the other, I think, so that it's not in two places and we're trying to figure out what's up and down.
Uh, Boyd, any feeling on your part?
Well, having it in two places makes it confusing, I think. Um, um, I, I believe that I would prefer a lease, but like Dick said, we've never done that. We've always written them down because we know that leasing costs more money. And uh, um, but just to ease the 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 budget issues now uh in the next day, year, or two or three, I would, I would tend to, I looked pretty favorably at that lease stuff. But uh, I I wouldn't argue too much about that. If you want to, if you want to buy it, that's fine, but put it in capital and let's get on with it.
Uh, it looks like, have we lost Marshall?
Hey, we did.
Okay, um.
He's back.
He's back. He was probably, he was probably listening to you.
Yeah, go ahead, Dick.
One thing relative to the cost, and the chief made it clear that that's the case, and I think you have also, Kevin. The idea that this, the the real cost of this is sixty-seven thousand. And we're going to take fifty-seven as a capital and ten thousand as an operating. I think that's disingenuous. I think the people need to know what they're spending their money for. How much does it cost us to get a cruiser? I think that's, it's crucial that that not be um a complex set of numbers or whatever. Um, the idea is that the town, at town meeting makes the decision, should we spend this much money for this item? To add an air conditioner to the police department, to do, to add a generator to the town hall, to buy a new uh police cruiser, to buy a new fire truck. And it should be all in. They should see all of the cost. That's, that's the, that's the way of being uh open and clear to people. So I I am concerned that that particular item, I'm not asking it necessarily to make a change now, but I think between us, we need to think about what we want to present to this, this, the the amount that we want to present to town meeting.
Kevin, was there, um, I can't remember what Chief said. Was there a reason why he's he split out the ten to be in the operating budget?
Um, I know that he had a line item that he felt could could cover that cost. And so um, the purchase of the vehicle, it's a separate, separate vendor. We purchased the vehicle and the vehicle goes out at that point. Um, to Mr. Gates' point, it it, you you don't buy a cruiser without having those costs associated with it. That's just part of, you know, if you buy a snowplow, you need to buy the plow with it, even if it doesn't. you know, if you buy a snowplow, you need to buy the plow with it, even if it doesn't cover the. So, uh, it, it's well, well taken, well received.
Here's the truck. Oh, uh, no, it doesn't have an engine. We're doing the engine over here.
Um, I think, I think he, oh, I was just gonna say, I think that we were, we were really working hard trying to get that $300,000 number on the budget, uh, or on the capital, I should say. Um, and I think, I think Chief, uh, saw that he had, he could, he could cover that cost within the operating and try to get us there. So I think that, that's my, my, my take on it. Um, without Chief being here, that's, that's my understanding of it.
If I'm to pick up the context, it sounds like what I missed was, we're not going to lease it or we're not suggesting we lease it, but that we're going to split it out with $10,000 being part of the operating budget and 55 or whatever it is as an ask at town meeting.
How did you do that? You weren't even here, Marshall.
Listen, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's what I do.
Okay, yes, that is. So I think the sense of the board is to move it into capital and, and take it out of the operating budget, the 14,844.
Is it, is it, if during the conversations with the FinCom, if, and I don't thi, I don't want to speak for them either, but, um, there's a very good chance they are going to be lockstep with you folks on that. Um, you know, I see a lot of value using free cash to cover that cost. Um, not building into the budget, but, um, in the event that they, they decide a different, uh, strategy around it, I, my thought would be maybe we have, um, a meeting where we, we call a joint at one point and we just, we flushed something like that out, um, before making any final decision. But I, I can indicate the, the direction that the board wants to move in with that going forward in the version two. Um.
I, I'm comfortable with that. If, if the FinCom raises it and they would like to discuss it, I'd love to hear their, their thinking on it. I don't, so many problems to discuss it.
It's okay with me.
Yep. Excellent. All right, great. That guidance, that's great. Um, and then there were just some, some, um, other, uh, clarifying, um, items that, um, that the, the chair provided. Um, just some, some tweaks on, on wording of how we represent certain things within, um, the budget, such as the, I think it was put in as Christmas on the green, it's holiday on the green, for example, um, in one item. And then, um, the recreation department, um, and how we sort of, um, spell that out in the, um, in the detail. So, um, we can make some tweaks on that, some small modifications. Um, if, if it's okay, I can now move over to Mr. Jackson's list and we can go through that.
Sounds good.
To what? Where are we going?
Uh, to Boyd's list.
Okay, gotcha.
Uh, just, just let me comment a little bit. Um, I, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, that you've got enough feedback from these department heads, Kevin, uh, when they ask for additional money. Um, I want to make sure that you're comfortable with what they're asking for and, uh, and go from there. And we don't need to spend a lot of time on it because it was just something that I thought needed to be pointed out to you. And I know that you're going to be interested in that. Um, you've already covered the stuff that I wanted to, uh, lease versus purchase of the cruiser. Um, uh, the ambulance, uh, the ambulance fund that you want to put together. Uh, and then, and building inspector situation in terms of hours and that sort of thing. Um, uh, and we've got to address that in my opinion. Uh, I think it's important that we have a, if, if not a full-time building inspector, we ought to have one that's near full-time and he ought to be good at what he does, okay? Because it's an important job for, for the town. Um, I'm, I'm not hiring, I'm not interested in hiring some schlock that doesn't know what he's doing. Uh, and, and we may, like, uh, like we were told, you may have to, you may have to pony up with some money to get somebody that's any good. Your idea about, uh, joining up with another town leader is a good idea. I, 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 yeah, that can work because we've done it in the past and, uh, I hope we would be lucky enough to do it again. Uh, Kevin, that's about all I've got really, uh, because like you said, you've covered, um, you've covered most of it. Uh, I ask you to, uh, one of the little things on my list was to, uh, uh, assign the responsibilities of tree warden to the DPW department. Uh, that's nothing we need to do now, but it's something we need to think about in the future because it makes no sense. My opinion makes no sense what we're doing now.
Was there a rationale for that, Boyd? At one point, why was that separated from the highway department? Or why was that not a part of it?
Well, uh, the fact of the matter is the, uh, it was easy for us to live with it because Dave Bond was the tree warden and he was the super, highway superintendent. He had all the men and the tools and the equipment and everything to do both jobs. Uh, why it was, I can't remember when it was done or how it was done. But now we've got a situation where we've got a tree warden that has nothing. And, uh, if he, if he's got to do something with a tree, he's got to go to Gary Wild's and say, here, take care of that tree for me. Uh, makes no sense to me.
I only chuckle, you, as you say, you ended up with it because it just happened to be the same guy. And this is, isn't this kind of the reverse, how we ended up with no recreation department? Because we just folded it underneath somebody who happened to be good enough at it?
Yes.
Well, Boyd certainly knows a lot more about this area than, than I do, having been on the highway. Uh, but, but there is something to be said for, uh, a war, it's a different, it, it's a separate, um, statutes that involve the tree warden. There's certain things that serious about tree warden and statutes that we need to follow. That doesn't mean it can't be in the same, you know, same person. Obviously it was, but it's a different function than it is quote highway. My understanding is that a good part of what was done in, in highway was to use contractors to do that kind of work, this, the stuff that the tree warden dealt with. An additional thought along the tree warden is it's, it should be somebody who has some reasonable knowledge of, of trees. That's very helpful. If not, then you do need to use a, somebody who is a consultant in, in, uh, taking care of trees and things like that to, to tell, to tell, oh, this tree does, yeah, this is a problem tree or, uh, it doesn't look like a problem. So, so this is pretty hard to tell sometimes and then sometimes it's a judgment call. It's not the healthiest tree, but I think it'll be around for a while. Um, so I, I think it's simpler than simply saying, just put it in the other department.
I mean, I, I will.
To be, uh, an additional job that it was, it had a separate amount of money because it was in addition to the 40 hours that Dave worked. So we also need to think about that piece of it is if we add that to highway, meaning Gary Wild's, I assume, then that's more work that he has to do with, which is a person who's told us he starts early in the morning and works late at night every day.
I didn't, I didn't take, correct me if I'm wrong, Boyd, I didn't take what you were saying to mean that the tree warden should be Gary or just that that person, that, that position should be moved into that department, not that that person should be eliminated and, and Gary should take it over.
We could, we could do it that way too. Um, uh, I, Dick, and your point's well taken. Uh, um, I'm concerned about the fact that we've filled Gary's plate up pretty full. And, uh, I talk to him regularly about whether or not he's burning himself out and, uh, he claims he's not, uh, but I think we need to be aware of that. And, um, and, uh, and Marshall, you're right, uh, we could, uh, we can handle it a number of ways, I think. Dick made a good point about the fact that it's, it's a different kind of a genre, a different kind of a, uh, different kind of a, uh, job than taking.
Set of skills. I mean, you, you want somebody with a, a certain set of skills. I will note that i- in the description here, it says trees in public parks, town commons, public streets, schools and town forests. Those first four are all things that Gary is taking care of in terms of, of the area. The last one, obviously, I don't think Gary's doing a lot to town forests. So again, if you had a tree warden who worked as part of Gary's world, then I think it would dovetail nicely. Not to give the job to actually Gary, but have that person, you know, work inside that department, given that you to somebody's point, a lot of the equipment he needs to follow through is coming from them anyway.
And just a point about, uh, the number of hours that Gary is working. I, I know that Gary is taking on or shouldering a number of the responsibilities that we had always said would be offset by going to a recreation director. That we started with three heads and we were going to move to three heads. We were just going to reorganization, reorganize the functions and put them in places that gave us the most efficiency. And the remaining functions that don't fit under highway would remain with that person who was Steve Shepherd. But it now will be termed recreation director. So all of those functions will be taken off the shoulders of Gary when that position is filled. So it, that will be a relief to Gary. He's being a good sport and shouldering it all. Um, as the season starts to, to heat up, but, um, it was always anticipated that there would remain three positions. Um, so Gary won't be at the, the speed he's at, you know, continually. And, and plus too, Gary's in his first year, which always is a busier time, um, as someone comes up to speed in a position. So that probably will be an offset for him as well. But we trust Gary to tell us if we are loading him up too heavy.
I had a good honest conversation with him, um, just last week, um, just how he's doing, how the hours are going, talked about the future. Uh, we've got a great foreman who took over for Gary when he moved into the superintendent role, um, that, you know, has a really bright future and is doing some really great work to help alleviate some of that, um, uh, stresses or pressures that are associated with the role, um, and helping support Gary in his efforts. So, but he was very excited, um, to know that we are moving forward in the, um, budget, um, with an ask for the recreation dress director, uh, as, as we indicated in prior conversations as a team.
And can you just remind me, assuming it all gets, uh, approved, what our ballpark for, or hope for getting somebody into that position would be timeline?
I'm looking at it, I have it on paper as a 19-hour position and I think we had it in at 31,000 as an estimate on what that would cost the, uh, within the budget to have that. And then a ballpark at $3,500 in other expenses.
A timeframe, Kevin, for bringing that person on? What were you looking at? June, July?
Probably start to, to, to pull everything together to get posting out and do some, some, you know, put the, put the bug in people's ear, um, about the position. Um, you know, early spring and then start working up and ramping it up and, and get the position posted. Once we know it's going to be supported and funded in, in, in the budget going forward.
Summertime would probably be a ballpark of when we'd see somebody into that position if all goes well?
If this passes our, if this passes at town meeting, um, with this included in there, we know we have the funding available. That's early May. We can move pretty quickly thereafter, um, because we do have some savings that we're recognizing in this year's operating budget. Um, due to some of the cost constraints we put in, uh, higher freezes, Steve's salary going away, um, and, and spending freeze.
Okay.
Uh, can I just go back to a quick comment, please, on the tree warden, uh, where it might go? It could be anybody. We should understand that all of the people who work for Gary, uh, except secretarial work is union work. That doesn't mean the tree warden would have to be, but I could believe that the tree warden, depending upon who you wind up picking out, could wind up wanting to be part of the union also. I, I think that's probably not the best thing to do. Um, just, just a side comment.
I, I wouldn't, I agree with you, Dick. I wouldn't be wild about that either.
Okay. So, uh, so we're talking about the recreation here. And, uh, what I heard you say, Lynn, is that we wanted him to do the work that Steve was doing. Um, I, I'm, I still can't get my head around this. Uh, I'm, I'm reading line 28 in the, uh, uh, the over, uh, other, excuse me, other. And it says, "The recreation director will be charged with building a new recreation program for the town and work under the supervision of." So I don't hear something that's saying essentially do the following things that Steve Shepherd did that is going to relieve what Gary Wild is trying to do. Now.
Which is exactly what I said to Kevin to change it.
Of both people. I, I don't know, but I, I like the fact that you're asking, why are you getting burned out? Because the last thing we do, wanted to was burn somebody out. Uh, and it's also perhaps unfair to ask somebody to, uh, to, to do, uh, a consistent 60 or 70 hours of work, um, a week, especially if we had.
Yeah, a couple of points on that, Dick. Um, that's the point. When Kevin said I, I gave him some suggested changes to the recreation director, um, wording. I said, "We're not completely building a new recreation department. There will be some additional, um, activities that we will be able to do with that person in place, but there are things already going on that Steve did relative to recreation." There were things from what I'm hearing that Marshall and Gretchen did relative to recreation that still have to continue. Um, Gary has been starting to shoulder some of this now that things are starting to bubble back up. He got some relief because of COVID. There wasn't too much going on in this area that he had to coordinate, but it's going to start to heat up and it all. So everything having to do with TAA in the fields and scheduling, all of that Gary is shouldering now. So there are a, a number of things that Steve was doing and Marshall and Gretchen were doing that don't go away just because we moved, you know, the, um, cemetery functions over to highway. And at the time that we put this forward is you need someone there. They, they will do the reorg, they will let the commissions go away, but there's work that's going to have to be done that you need someone to come in here and, and, and oversee. And that's what that third position is. Now, the fact that we are, you know, Kevin has a lot of great ideas of some additional things that can be done by that person. It doesn't negate the fact that there are things right now that need to be done and there's no one to do it. This Gary can't.
And you make it, I, I was gonna say, you, you made the point, but I'm going to reiterate it stronger. Um, the fact that this is happening while we're in the middle of a pandemic has, I think, potentially created the illusion that Gary can handle it all, right? Because he is. Except that there's a massive amount of stuff that isn't being done right now. TAA is doing very, you know, a, a tiny portion of what they typically would do. The high school and other football teams that were using Pi Brook, they're not doing that right now. The softball leagues, they were doing, I mean, there is an enormous amount of recreation, even aside from just organized sports. Camps, Cub Scouts, all of these things that people were using and that we would have to go through that just aren't happening and haven't been happening even last summer. Um, all of that's going to start to ramp up, God willing. Uh, and when it does, uh, it, it, I mean, Gary is a superhero, but it, it will be too much. And, you know, all due respect to the advisory, uh, capacity of the Park and Cemetery, uh, Commission. I'm pretty sure that Gretchen and I are not going to be able to, uh, and Jay, uh, step back into where we were before. So it's gonna have to, it's gonna have to go somewhere.
Uh, just somewhat on the fly than, uh, my, my thinking. So what I hear is that this position, not necessarily as it's described in that first sentence, um, is going to be both to do things that Steve Shepherd did and to do new things. I think at a minimum, we should separate out percentage-wise, hours-wise, something that would say this person is going to pick up 10 hours a week of what Steve Shepherd did. And 10 hours a week, new things that are the following, blah, 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 blah. So that it's a fairly clear understanding of what's to do that we've done in the past. As you point out very well, Marshall, the time is coming when we're going to not have COVID good and have lots of people back on the fields and doing all sorts of things. Uh, but I think that's important because, uh, even as somebody like the, the FinCom who has a, a guideline of no new, no new programs, uh, if they can see that, they say, you know, we don't like, uh, this whole thing, you know, whatever, but we understand that you have to do what we did in the past and therefore we will approve this, whatever his title is, uh, to continue to do that for the hours, the 10 hours that were necessary. But you know, this new stuff that he's going to do, no. So I think it's really only a 10-hour increase or whatever the case may be. Some way to separate out what is necessary to be done to continue to do what we've done in the past. And maybe we don't have to do some things we did in the past. I don't know. Uh, that may be good if we, if we could get out of not doing some things, but assuming we have to do all the things we did in the past, not taking anything away. How many hours of this person will be spent doing that? What percentage of the time would the person be doing that? And what percentage of time will be doing something new, as it suggests in here, new? As it suggests in here, new, and what are those things that are new? I would ask that those things kind of be brought forward because sooner or later, we're gonna have to discuss them either with the FinCom or at the annual town meeting.
Dick, and I, I totally agree with you. Kevin and I had that talk just a, a couple of days ago, which is why I just put this down on paper after he and I discussed it. The role, Steve Shepard was 40 hours a week. His role is dropping down to 19 hours with this reorg. Kevin had promised that he would have savings. That's what he promised the commission, um, and, and the taxpayer when we put this through. And he's delivering on that. He's going down $11,000 net with this reorg with improved ability to do other things. So he's meeting his obligation to go down $11,000. So it's pretty clear cut and I'm sure he, with the help of Marshall can put it together. Steve started at 40 hours. I'm just making up numbers now because I don't know the exact, but, um, you know, 12 hours went over to, um, Gary. And that, you know, dropped him down so that there were, uh, what, 28 hours? And then there were, uh, nine hours that went to the admin because that was work really that Steve was doing that he, you know, it, it shouldn't be done by someone with a lower pay grade. So nine hours of his work went over to the admin, which is why the admin hours went up a little bit. And that leaves you with the 19 hours for the following list of items. I think it's easy to put that together. I bet if Kevin and with Marshall's help identified all those things that's, um, Steve was doing, that you could easily see how 40 dropped to 19, but 19 is still required. And that's why I really didn't like. Yeah, I didn't like the wording of building a new recreation department. We're just carrying on the functions that were done by Steve and the advisor, you know, the, the commission that still exists today. Even if you give Gary the highway, even if you push some things down to admin, you still have 19 hours of work left that Steve was doing. So.
That's fine. Then, then I guess we want to fix this and say that there's no new, we want to take the word out, new recreation programs. We want to take that out.
I would suggest that because I think it's misleading.
We understand the 19 and I'm, I'm fine with the 19. I, I see them there. That's okay. That makes sense. But then there's nothing new. He's, he's doing what Steve did.
Well, I, I mean, all I would caution, I, I don't want to parse it too much, but I think somebody in there dedicated to recreation is going to do new things. They just are. For instance, I can tell you that there, you know, how we get from Chief Collins Brown, uh, a new, you know, grant, a new, you know, free money every week? Do you know how many grant programs there are out there for recreation? I mean, the state of Massachusetts alone has a list like that and we are taking advantage of none of them. Not a single one of them as far as I know. And part of that was Steve was just, first of all, it was not what he did and he had a completely full plate. So one of the things that I'm absolutely going to expect of whoever this rec department is to do what Chief Collins Brown has done and spend some time looking at all the grant opportunities and going after them because they are there. And at least some of them seem remarkably easy to get. And if there's anything we love, it's free money. And so is that an existing thing that Steve Shepard did? Absolutely not. Do I believe that a new recreation department person needs to do that? Absolutely. So how that fits into existing hours and new duties and, and I, I don't know that I want to figure out that wording. But I'm telling you that that person is going to do that. And by the way, could probably pay for themselves practically by doing that.
And they won't be pulled in six directions. Steve was doing many things. He had many hats. If someone is just devoted to recreation, you're going to be more efficient, which was part of the driving force in this. Put things into the, the area where you could do it most efficiently. And if you do that, it's going to free up time or money or resources to let you do other things. But at this point, I wouldn't be committing to them firmly. We don't know what they are. We'll see where that goes. But we do know for a fact, this existing work has to be covered by someone. And the plan always was to have it be this third person, whatever we call them. But what's left there now is, is all recreation oriented. So that's why we change the wording.
Dick, I, I mean, I, to, to your point specifically, you know, it may, it may very well be that in year one, this person is doing 19 hours of existing work, right? They're doing the stuff that they did. But as like we talked about with Gary, as they get into the job and figure out the intricacies and, and figure out, well, this is what was done before, but we can do it better. I would not at all be surprised, in fact, would expect that year one, 19 hours is existing. By year two, they've taken those 19 hours and they've figured out how to do that in 12 hours. And now they've got seven hours to dedicate to something new. So I don't think we, Kevin, Gary, anybody can identify exactly what is percentage old and percentage new right now. And so I'm comfortable saying it's a hundred percent percentage old. But I'm going to honestly say right now that, you know, a year in, I'm going to expect that that 19 hours is now being done in 12. And they're now doing new stuff.
To Dick's point, I do think it would be helpful for the FinCom to see exactly what remains in that 19 hours. So that they're like, okay, this is all the stuff that Gary can't do that remained after we moved everything to where we thought it should be.
Marshall, do you have any, uh, any breakdown of the, the kind of stuff that, um, that, um, Parks and, Parks and Cemeteries was doing, uh, that would encompass the 19 hours? Could you put together a, um, a couple of comments for FinCom?
I can try to, to, to work something up in that department, yeah.
Sounds to me like, sounds to me like you and Lynn, you and Lynn are the only ones here that know what you're talking about because I certainly don't. Uh, we don't, I don't think Dick knows what the Recreation Department did.
I think a lot in, in my one year on Parks.
In great detail, uh, so.
What I'll do is, is I'll get with Gretchen who will know it even better than I did. Because ultimately I was only on that commission for one year with Steve. But yes, I mean, I can tell you that the bulk of that one year, we spent, the commission commissioners, more than anything, talked about recreation.
And then that write-up could go in place of what we have here Kevin, to explain those functions to the FinCom so that they have it right in front of them. I, you know, I think this is like so many other places within town. People are doing so many things and staying quiet about it. They just do it. And it's not articulated in the job description. It's not talked about. You just do it. And that was the kind of guy that Steve was and that Marshall and Gretchen were. You just do whatever needs to be done without making people aware.
And to my point from a couple of meetings ago, I'm pretty sure that's how Park and Cemetery ended up taking care of all the schools, fields and yards and land. So.
Yeah.
So that, that was it. Other than Kevin, my final note on, on my, well, that was it for, for, for my comments here. It, it was just, um, I had a question about the additional request for increases in salary that were from FIRE, Board of Health and Town Accountant. Would that increase our unclassified employee benefit number? Did we take that into account? So that's in the budget too, to reflect the additional 50,000 that we're asking for for salaries?
We have a salaries reserve fund, um, that's funded for 85,000. It's typically used for the union contracts. I don't know if that's what you, I wrote that in my notes when I was re, reading that, uh, line item. Are you, are you talking about that? Are you speaking to the extra hours for the assistant town accountant? Or to help a assistant, those hours that Catherine over at the police, excuse me, police department and the aggregate of those?
Yeah. So everything that was in the red column for additional salaries for FIRE, you know, the 10,000 for FIRE, the additional hours that Catherine wanted and that Wendy wanted. When you add them all up, that's $50,000 in additional salary. So did we put in a corresponding increase in the over ask column for unclassified employee benefits? Because that would be raised up as well, I think, if the, that bucket of salary money went up.
So, um, so most, I, none of the, all those employees looking for additional hours are already benefited employees. So I don't, I don't know if, if, um, there's a corresponding increase related to that. But I can, off the top of the, top of my mind, I, I, I can't think of a, um, but I can find, I'll find.
I, I didn't know if they were tied into the salary. So there was a certain percentage that.
It's, it's the Medicare tax, 1.45%, but it's not included, but the account should be able to sustain that.
Okay.
Existing account.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thanks Catherine. Can I, um, just real quick on the recreation? I just want to close on the recreation that I think we said this when we were working with the commissioners. It's gonna be really important we hire well in that position. It's gonna have to be a really dynamic person who can really take on the existing responsibilities. But to Mr. Hook's point, grow that position over time as well. And so we're gonna do our best to recruit a good person for it. That's for sure.
Well, Kevin, I agree with you. I agree with you and I want to emphasize Dick's point a little bit. That, that's even more critical about what's included in that 19 hours. What, what, what do you need that person to do to start with? Like Marshall said, it's gonna be, he's gonna, that person's gonna be working on existing programs for the first year probably or somewhat, uh, but then it'll evolve into something else. But that 19 hours, the definition of that 19 hours becomes pretty important.
I can tell you just to my point about grants, when I was president of Lynn Youth Soccer Volunteer Organization, we had a volunteer position that was nothing but grants and fundraising. And without much effort, we were able to get about $20,000 annually from the state for not the entire city of Lynn, but for the soccer program alone. Now granted, the soccer program serviced, I don't know, 3,000 kids. So it's like half the population of Topsfield. But still, if, if a single soccer program in Lynn can get $20,000, I'm relatively sure we can find money from, from state grants.
And Kevin, I, I just want to commend you for thinking ahead and envisioning where this position can go and what they can do and the additional services they could bring to the town when they get ramped up to that position. So, you know, it's like no good deed goes unpunished. You start to strategize and envision and we beat you down saying, just focus on the here and now. So.
I appreciate it. It's, it's all good. The right questions asked. We gotta pull and tug at it. Make sure, you know, we're thinking through all the decisions we make. So I appreciate it greatly. Thank you.
So Boyd, was that everything for you?
I'm, I'm sorry.
That's it. Yeah. We've, I'm sorry, Marsh. Go ahead.
Dick was asking me a question, I think.
Did you mention that in Lynn, you had a volunteer that got $20,000 worth of grants? Could, could we use some volunteers to do that now regardless of whether we have a recreation director or whatever? That sounds like a great idea. Let's see if we can get some volunteers if it works there.
The city of Lynn has a population of about 98,000 people, so I had a, a bigger pool to find a, a willing volunteer to do that.
But. That's a good idea.
Sounds like Gretchen Rehak might be a real candidate for that.
I mean, I, I can believe somebody, uh, thank you.
Sahar on Gretchen's arms is going up right now as you say that Boyd.
She's just sitting somewhere going, what?
I'm not volunteering who, but I am saying, you have a lot of talent in Topsfield. Let's see if we can tap them for volunteering.
I bet we can find somebody.
Yeah.
Oh, we gotta figure out.
We could have Gary try to track down that person in his free time.
Yeah, in his free time.
Dick, did you have any, um, additional comments on the budget?
There was one thing that was somewhat open, uh, because you mentioned again, the, the salaries and that, uh, and Catherine's on here too. The question was at one point, how long would it take us to implement something that would improve the efficiency of dealing with the vendor stuff? And how much would it save us if we implemented it? Meaning largely this idea of, uh, self-serve for vendors. Do we, do we come up with some answers on that? How long it would take to implement and how much it would be able to save us?
On Munis you're talking about?
Yeah.
So we had, um, we've been having periodic meetings in regards to trying to start, uh, we've talked a little bit about this, but implementing a plan where we can roll out, um, different departments over a period of time and have them have a direct access into Munis so they can input those invoices directly. And have the ability to, to leverage the, the resource that we have with Munis. We actually had a, a scheduled, um, um, today for a meeting, but we had to, or it was yesterday. Days are blending into each other, but we had a meeting with the finance team to talk through that, the next steps. Unfortunately, due to conflicts of really my fault with the vaccination clinic and trying to get that stood up, we had to postpone that meeting. But, um, the conversation absolutely is still happening and something that personally, it's a goal of mine that we can try tackling that. Keep the conversation going and then tackle it when the capacity becomes available to our team to, to roll it out.
The logic of the question was at that time that we're asking for money next year. So it's five months from now. The question is, what might we be able to do between now and then? Or you can't do it until umpty um, but this is, and this is how much it would save. If somebody said it would take a year to get there, then we have an idea of, okay. And how much is it gonna save? Nothing. Oh. Oh, it's gonna save 10%. Oh, that's very interesting. Okay. Then we can affect the budget that way. So that's why I think it's helpful to have an idea of how long it would take and how much it would save us. How, how helpful would it be? Because we're trying to drive for efficiencies always, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
It's a, it's, it's absolutely, I think it's, it's, it's absolutely something we have to pursue. It's, it's, I don't want to call it a no brainer, but I would, I would say it's certainly a no brainer to pursue it and see how far we can take it. And hopefully it's something we implement and we have success with it. I'm a big proponent though, when you make that type of change, um, especially when it's technology driven, it, it, it needs to be very thorough, policy guides, training, um, explanations to the team before, during and after implementation, uh, to be successful. So I know, I, if anything, I might be the, the driving force of, of, you know, not moving as quickly on it. But I want to make sure all those i's are dotted and the t's are crossed before we, we take that on. And there is a lot right now that the team's working through and I, I didn't want to overburden anyone with trying to tackle it because we're gonna do it. We gotta do it right.
That was a prior life for me, technology and systems implementation, and it's no small undertaking. You, you have to know what you're doing and, and it takes time on, on the part of many people in the input, but, um.
Implementing your stuff.
Yeah, we're just looking for estimates though to start with, not, not the implementation, but if it costs $50,000 to do it and you would get $1,000 a year back, hmm, 50 year payback's not too good. Let's find something else that we can spend time on.
That's not something in the budget this year, Dick. This is an effort you're saying we should start to undertake?
Well.
Okay.
The question, what, what prompted the question Lynn, was the need for additional hours because we have so many vendor processes that Sue has to deal with. And I understand it's, it's, it's a challenge. Okay. And we have lots of them and we're falling behind. We know that there is this thing in Munis that's available, uh, self-serve. And there's three different pieces of it, one of which is vendor. I'm no explanation, uh, expert in it, but that's conceptually what it is. And so the logical question was, could we implement it? How fast could we implement it? And how much would it help us? Again, if it helped us with, um, only a thousand dollars, but costs us 50,000 to implement, I don't want to do it. On the other hand, if we can implement it reasonably easy and get a good payback on it as far as the number of hours it saves, then we should be looking at it harder. That, that was the whole reason for that, that question.
And I know that I've talked to Catherine a number of times too. Um, she's, she's such a trooper. She, I know how many hours she's pouring into it as well. I mean, we have such great stat. We talk about Gary, you know, we've got our chiefs, we've got Kath, we've got so many people on this team that, you know, whatever it takes, they're, they're putting in the time. But there's, there's just a lot, um, on the financial side that I know that Catherine's shouldering where if there was more capacity within department as well, some of that could shift. So if we moved the Munis, that would take, I couldn't reveal a hard percentage of what that looks like. But I know that talking with Catherine, there is certain, as, as Sue's been able to get, uh, more and more experienced and, and comfortable and has proven herself, um, that I think Catherine's intent is to try to shift some of the, those, those items that are keeping her up till midnight and one o'clock at night, trying to keep, uh, above water, um, over to, um, to Sue as well. I don't know though, from hour to hour, what that translates to of how much would be offloaded with Munis, um, change and how much Catherine looks, is looking to move over. But I know, um, that's also part of that consideration as well, is trying to make sure that we have, um, enough hours in total in that department, um, to make sure that they can, we're not missing things. Not that they are, but that we don't miss things and, um, we keep things fit, efficient and, and timely on, on the requests that are coming in.
Kevin, you bring up another point. Just as with Gary, Gary Wild, we do need to be careful we don't burn people out. You're telling us that Catherine is working till midnight each night just to get the job done. That's okay for a week, but it cannot be an ongoing thing. We've got to change something. Either we're doing something that is good to do, but not necessary, or we're trying to do the wrong things, uh, the, the right things the wrong way or something. I mean, and, and, and it can happen that somehow somebody in a department is working hard because they're filling in for somebody who's not doing their work someplace else and they don't, you know, it's just like, well, we gotta get it done. Then we need to look at the other, whatever's going on. We know what we were able to do in past years. in past years. The number of citizens in the town is not that much bigger. Theoretically, at least, technology is better than it was five years ago. Same number of people in the town. We should at least be able to take some pressure off people. And yet, we're hearing that it's more pressure than it was before.
I, I mean, I would take some of that burden on my shoulders that I, I do ask a lot of the team. I don't ask them to work till midnight per se. But, you know, there's times where work ebbs and flows and things, number of things hit at the same time that might require. For instance, this year, we changed our budget schedule. And instead of having a two-week period where we got budgets in from all the departments, we consolidated down to one week. We talked through it. We thought we were going to be able to do it. And what ended up happening was that there was a couple nights where Catherine was working later than I think we both intended and wanted. But we wanted to make sure we hit that deadline. And, you know, for instance, with this meeting today, we moved it up to Wednesday so that I can give Catherine enough time to make what updates are necessary before we do version two and still try to hit that before the end of this week. Because I know FinCom's going to be taking it up next week as well, the version two. And I think they wanted an updated version. So to be frank, I mean, you know, there's the must things that we do as an organization, but then there are the things that are right to do, things that allow us to keep moving and being progressive and doing right by the town, which we're very fortunate that we've got people who are passionate about what they do. If you're passionate, it's not work. It's, it becomes something that's part of you. And, you know, we've got a really great team. I'm conscious of the fact that people are putting a lot of hours in, but there's been a lot of change too. We talked about Gary, but he's in his first year of doing two budgets from the ground up that he hadn't worked on before. We added some administrative assistant that he didn't have for a handful of months while we were going through the transition. The rec component, that falls off. Hopefully that creates, I talked to him, I said, I want to get to a place with you where you're working a regular schedule. I mean, things will come up where you're not. Are we going to be able to get there? And he said, absolutely, Kevin, I think we will. So, you know, to the point of the accounting department, I think the hours, there are some efficiencies, as you mentioned, Mr. Gant, that absolutely we're looking at and we need to look at. But I know there's also just things, reporting, things of that nature that sometimes fall back onto the town accountant that we would, we prefer that the assistant town accountant might be able to take on.
And just as an aside, Kevin?
Yeah. What's that? Sorry.
I was just adding, Dick, when I mentioned about the additional hours, it wasn't for implementation. If you're looking at making a change in your system and what that actually is going to save you, that takes time and energy upfront. So you're actually loading up Catherine to work with munis to identify, how do we do it today? What's the process? How many hands hit it? You know, what's the timeframe? What systems are we using? What procedures do we have? What does munis offer? How could we change that? Who would be impacted? That actually takes time upfront to do that analysis. And we definitely should do it. But right now, if they're hitting some peaks because we're changing the way we're doing things or just what's hitting her plate for this year, that actually would make her even busier, that analysis, you know, upfront. So. But Catherine, I'm assuming, Kevin, if we give her the hours that she's identified in this budget, she feels that they can handle things without being overloaded and overworked?
I, that's my understanding. I mean, obviously, that's, I think, when she spoke to it, that was the intent to add those hours is to get the department to a, to a better place where, you know, Sue's not working beyond her regular schedule to get the things that need to get done. I mean, I knew she was working on Sunday to try to get some of the warrant articles, items done for this past warrant. Those are the things we obviously, like we talked about, want to try to avoid going forward.
Well, we always want them to speak up and Catherine's right on here now. So she would know. We don't want her overworked. And hopefully she feels like this additional, you know, group of hours would make life reasonable for her and for Sue. So if she doesn't feel that way, definitely she should reach out to you and let us know. We don't want anyone worked into the ground.
I mentioned earlier, we talked about the inspectional services department and not to pit one department against the other, but the assessor's office and the hours that are requesting and watching what they do and being close to it. I feel much better about that request than say, the inspectional services, when they're looking, go from 32 to 36. And what we had to do was go back down to 30 because, you know, doing some of our analysis, we thought that was a more realistic number to go forward with. So for what it's worth, I just, yes, I appreciate Matt shared the comments and the thoughts and everybody, Mr. Gant, everybody on that front. Thank you.
Dick, just to keep things moving, any other thoughts that you had that you passed over to Kevin you want us to review tonight?
No.
Marshall?
Good.
Okay. All right. Do we need a formal vote then to approve the omnibus? Or are you just good working with the comments that we've identified?
Matt, you do not need a vote formally on this. We could, if you want, I could go through the changes or we go through the changes, then you can make a vote if you like, just for the record. It's up to, it's up to the board.
I think we're probably, I'm, I'm fine with you incorporating the changes that we talked about. Dick, Marshall, Boyd, are you okay?
Yep, I'm okay.
If it's, if it's okay, I'll just real quickly just hit the, what I have for my notes. We're going to reduce electricity down to 10,000 over ask for the reasons explained earlier. We're going to add in the 10,000 for the fire, call firefighters. We're going to take out the 14,844 over asking for the police cruiser lease. And we're going to update the descriptions on the holiday on the green and the rec director department.
Right. Was there any change? Were you changing the dollar amount for the gas? Did Donna say, were you going back to level funding?
Oh, sorry, that wasn't on the, yes. See, she was looking, she, it was outside yours. Yes, there was, she was good. She had 2,000 and then before she was asking for 3,000 on the gas. She did, when she did a further analysis, I think she felt more comfortable with 3,000 than two to make sure we have what we need to cover.
Okay, that sounds like everything we discussed. So, okay, very good. The next item was town warrant. I don't know that we had anything to review and discuss. If you had any updates, Kevin, or that was just kind of a placeholder in case something new came up?
We'll call placeholder. I added in the Masco. I created a more consolidated version with less detail on it. The next version we'll, we'll put out for you folks. We'll have some draft language, I hope, for each of these that we can start looking at. The only other thing I'll mention is I had a conversation, we've had conversations with Martha Morrison. I think there's going to be one other item that they're going to request that be put into the warrant. Just see if I have it in front of me. Groundwater Protection District is the other one. There's some updates, some small housekeeping that she want, that the planning board wanted to incorporate.
Okay. Is there anything else? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Aw, come on.
Motion to adjourn.
We started at four, so it's been another long one. Motion to adjourn, Boyd?
Yeah.
Dick, Dick made it. I'll second-
He made it. Somebody second it.
I seconded Dick's motion to adjourn. I have a beautiful chicken teriyaki to make it look long.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
And Ms. Bermudez, aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you all very much and have a good rest of the night.
See you all soon.
Thank you all so much for your time. Really helpful. Thank you.